Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming this evening. All are present, and I'm going to take a motion to approve the agenda, but before I do, I'd like to make a slight change. I know all of you would like to sit through the truth and taxation levy certification, but I'll spare you that, and we will do the Laker Pride first. I know you're disappointed, Julie, to have a big audience, but with that change, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? By Stacy, second by Todd. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. We will move on to Laker Pride.
And Eric Modine, athletic director, will come up. You can, yes, or I can give you the...
All right, tonight, we'd like to recognize our fall teams that's qualified for the state, and I'd like to first call up the girls tennis team. Girls, if you'd come on up. Savannah Peterson is our captain, and she'll let you know everybody's coming up right up here. Savannah, you get to come here, though, and talk into the microphone. These girls qualified for state for the first time since 1991, and they came in third place in the state. Lost a tough match to Minnetonka, four to three in the semis, and then beat, help me out, who did we beat in the final? Rochester or Century? So Savannah's going to announce the names real quick.
We have Chloe Hall, ninth grader, Sarah Henderson, eleventh grade, Abby Broadwell, eleventh grade, Sydney Socker, ninth grade, Nikki Henderson, eleven, Hannah Lynde, eleven, Emily Galstad, eleven, Allison Wagner, tenth, Savannah Crowell, eighth, and Taylor Jackson, seventh.
Next, we have our girls cross-country team. The girls cross-country team qualified for state for the 10th year in a row, which is pretty amazing feat. Emily Stock is one of the captains, and she will announce who's here tonight.
Okay, we have Maddie Scholl, eighth grade, Kenzie Shell, in eleventh grade, and Megan Hovig, in eleventh grade.
Next, we have our girls swim and dive team. Our girls swim and dive team brought eight girls to state, is that correct, Coach Hecraft? Six, I apologize for that. And Coach Justin and Katie Hecraft will, oh, Sarah's going to announce the team members.
Okay, we have Kendra Laird, eleventh grade, Alex Spinner, ninth grade, Lauren Harris, ninth grade, Monica Vaniskowski, eleventh grade, and Grace Lamm, eleven.
Congratulations, ladies. And last but not least, we have the Laker football team. The Laker football team is represented by the captains here tonight. They qualified for state for the second year in a row, pretty incredible feat, and Jack Johnson is going to announce the players.
On your left there, we have Elijah Patrick, twelfth grade. In the middle, we have Cody Kohoat, or twelfth grade, and Parker Anderson, twelfth grade.
Thank you very much, Parker.
I believe Eric Pratt has left from his... We just had a reception, a short reception, in the other room before our meeting, and he said all the nice words. I'd love to repeat them all, but I don't think I can, per word. Martha, I'll start with you. Thank you so much for coming back again and helping us out on the board. I know you were on the board before I came, and then you came back to help us out when I first started, and then you came again. Really appreciate that. I know your heart is with kids, you're real involved in the community, and I encourage you to continue doing that. I know you will, I don't even have to say that, but thank you so much for everything that you've done for us. And Mike, Mike has been on the board almost as long as I have. We've had our differences of opinion over the years, but we've always kind of come around to agreeing with what, with our decisions, and always deciding what's best for kids. When Mike and I started on the board, the district was in a kind of a little bit of a financial bind, and it got a little worse, and then it started to get better, and now we're in a much better place, and I attribute a lot of that to Mike. I think he's really helped get us to where we are today, and he will be missed. I do envy him, though, being able to spend the time with his kids now because they're getting into high school, and those are great years to be with your family. So congratulations, Mike, and thank you very much for serving on the board. Okay, now we'll move on to the levy certification. Proposed levy certification, Julie?
Good evening. Here, Dr. Grover. Tonight, we want to discuss the final levy certification. Only a minute. The agenda for this evening, we have the levy calendar, basic school funding that we're discussing, factors contributing to the levy change, our levy certification, $2,012 to $2,012 on levy dollars, and I do have some graphical analysis that I'll be going over. First of all, the tax levy calendar, as you know, in September, the group approved levy, and as you know, the final levy cannot exceed the proposed levy that was approved in September. In November, the county level levy goes to our property owners, and now in December, we'll have a public hearing as part of a later board meeting, and later in next meeting, we will be certifying the final tax levy. Some discussion about the authority for school levies. The school taxes, the school tax revenue must be either set by state formula or voted through. Those are the two areas that we will have to...
That it makes up our total levy. The basic formula for calculating our state aid is the authorized total revenue minus the local property taxes equals the state aid. I do want to talk a little bit about our referendum market value analysis. As you can see, over the years, we grew for quite a few years until 2008, and slowly have dropped off. And our referendum market value, when that goes down, usually that means that there's a lower tax base to spread the referendum across. And so hopefully, as that, the economy changes, that this will start to rise again, and we'll have a larger tax base of which to utilize. Our adjusted net tax capacity also has followed that same trend. It's really peaked in 2009, and again, it has fallen off over the last two years. Some factors that impact any tax change for the district, there are issues that are driven by state-level decisions that are made, changes by state formula, if there's a change in our operating aid and levy, and that has happened in the past, change in the sales ratio, which adjusts, impacts our adjusted net tax capacity, and any laws mandating code compliance, such as health and safety. If we have additional asbestos statement that we need to eradicate, anything like that would affect our levy certification. We also could have any issues determined by district voters that could impact our levy. If there were voter-approved bond referendums or excess levy referendums, this district hasn't had a vote since 2008, and so what's in place has been in place since 2008. And then there are some local factors that impact our levy, the real estate market, anything that fluctuates with our valuation, abatements, property improvements that weren't previously taxed, so as we grow and people start to pay taxes on any new homes that are being built, is an area that impacts our levy, changes in individual assessed market value, and if there are any changes in classification, so homestead changes to rental, that does change our levy also. What's included in the school district's levy certification, as I said earlier, our voter-approved referendums, and those levies that are set by state formula, and I've listed those there, and the levies authorized by the state based on our local needs, such as reemployment, grand technical levy, our health and safety, we do have facilities lease, a small one, integration, deferred maintenance, and any extended day. I'm talking a little bit about our levy limitation. I do have a pie graph here, and as you can see, the majority of our levy is voter-approved, 83 percent of it. And so these are, these are our referendums and our building bonds. The state determines 13 percent, and then a very small portion is that local discretion. So as you can see, the district really has very little real authority to make a lot of changes besides going to the voters. As you can see, we did talk a little bit about our adjusted net tax capacity decreasing, and our referendum market value also decreasing, and we also had a reduction in our OPEB levy from last year, and so that does, did decrease a little bit our overall levy. As you know, our OPEB is other post-employment benefits, which we have been levying for the past four years, I believe, this is our fourth year, and so we actually take the costs for the 2011 and '12 retire reinsurance of about $500,000, and we levy for that. There isn't a cap on it, but at this time, there is no proration, so we are able to levy for the entire amount. Our final fall pay thirteen levy certification is $37,000 less than it was last year, so we are really stable for our levy from year to year, and we're trying to keep it as stable as we can, or decreasing slightly. As you can see, as you go through the different levies, there are many, the equity levy, they have, some will go up and some go down, depending on our enrollment, has an impact on whether some of our levies increase or decrease, and the state formula also determines some of that. As you can see, the biggest decrease that we have is on that OPEB line for that negative $243,000. And so our overall general fund is going down almost $100,000. We are able to levy somewhat for community service fund, and that depends on our census from year to year. Our census did decrease from what we had estimated because of the 2010 census, so we had a little bit overstated what our census was in the past, so that levy has actually decreased because our census has decreased. And then the debt service fund is up just slightly, but we have, as you know, the past two years refunded three of our bonds to try and decrease that levy, and so it's just a very slight minor increase this year for our debt service fund. So overall, between all of those funds, we actually have decreased just slightly, that And so I think that we are staying within the board's goal of keeping our levy flat from year to year. Any questions?
Is there any questions from the board? Is it now appropriate asking of anyone in the audience? Is there anyone in the audience that would, has a question for Julie or the board? Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda items. On our consent agenda this evening is the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the bank reconciliation statement for October 2012, approval of school board minutes on November 5th, and board canvassing on November 13th, 2012, and the donations as follows: lumber valued at $1,000 from Monica and Richard Rowe for the industrial tech department at Prior Lake High School, 1998 Pontiac Bonneville from Scott Swenson for the industrial tech department at Prior Lake High School, $41.50 from Ohio Pile Prints Incorporated to Prior Lake High School, Wells Fargo matching grant program, $148.08 from Loretta Sparley, $67.30 from Breon Silman, $53.83 from Marla Skensby, $42 from Jay LaPlante, $55.19 from Jane Campman, $77 from Shane and Abby Coutera, $1,000 from Tom Sylvester and Kayla Sylvester Schmidt Key to Westwood Elementary in memory of Kathy Sylvester, a French horn from Dave and Linda Lund for the music department at Prior Lake High School, trumpet from Brian and Leanne Bruley for the music department at Prior Lake High School, historic Prior Lake pictures from McDonald's to the Prior Lake, I'm sorry, historic Prior Lake pictures from McDonald's in Prior Lake to the district, $500 per school from the Prior Lake Lions Club to purchase new books, and $500 per school from Prior Lake Rotary to purchase new books, and registrations, terminations, and non-renewals is listed. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Come on.
By Tom, second.
Second.
By Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Moving on, we're now at a point in our agenda that we have open forum. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on an item that's not on our agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. Ma'am?
Good evening. First, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment in the senior board program.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment listed?
So move.
By Rich, second. By Stacy. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero.
Second, that is on following leave of absence in the senior board.
Do I have a motion to accept the leaves of absence?
I pick the motion.
By Tom?
I will second that motion.
By Rich. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero.
And lastly, I do have a recommendation for additional staffing. I'd like to go through this recommendation to start that part. And so first, the first part of this, and feel free to certainly ask questions if I go through Laura yet, is a recommendation to add an additional section to the second semester, a seventh-grade business teacher and an eighth-grade art teacher, and it's a very small amount of FTE that can make a very large difference in class size within the seventh and eighth grade in the seventh semester. There was a pickup as we've gotten scheduling, transitioning students from band classes, which is quite large, into smaller sections, and by adding those FTE, we can avoid some significant disruption. The next recommendation that I'm presenting is for a .25 two-hour custodian at the ALC. This position is recommended, it comes on the heels of board approval of two additional spaces at the ALC, one additional classroom, and also additional space for the office and nurse section. And at the time, Jim Delwo was hopeful that the current staffing allocation there would be able to take out that additional space and still provide a safe and clean environment for the students, but he's found that that has not been the case, and he is requesting additional support there, which is inappropriate. The next position being recommended is a new cross-country head coach. The current format for that program is one head coach and three assistants, and one of those assistants was added just this year, but since that time, that program has continued to grow. You can see in the numbers that I've got here that the program has more than doubled in the last two years, pretty incredible. And so the proposal here is not a significant cost increase, but it would be actually eliminating one of those assistant coaching positions, replacing it with an additional head coaching position, so that there would be both a boys and a girls to be transitioned there. And that's to make sure that the situation is manageable and that everybody's able to participate fully in the program. The cost for that addition will be supported by the number of... And then lastly, there's a request for three additional positions, and these are student support positions in the kids company program at three sites, so one at Edgewood, Five Oaks, Red Hill Ridge, and this is due to the increased size, and actually, for the first time at Edgewood, they're looking at opening an additional classroom, and this is a staff that will allow them to do that, so that's also exciting news, they've really been able to expand the program and not add any... And does anybody have any questions?
There are no questions. Do I have a motion to accept the additional staff? By Martha, second.
Second.
By Tom. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. We have no old business this evening, so we'll move on to the new business, and that is the final levy certification for 2013, our payable 2013. Do you have more to add to what you just presented, Julie?
I don't. I'm just requesting, I'm recommending that the board approve the $252,406.78 for the final levy certification.
Do I have a motion to accept the final levy certification?
Second.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Julie. Oh, I think you're still up. Our next, next item on our agenda is NEXUS, so I'll let you take it from here.
As you know, over the past several months, the board has been, and the district has been working with NEXUS Solutions to create a long-range facilities plan, and we are requesting that the board approve a resolution authorizing NEXUS and the district to proceed with the plan as outlined in your board packet.
Okay, there is a resolution, which I'll read right now. Whereas the board is fundamentally committed to providing a quality learning environment for all students and is committed to using taxpayer dollars efficiently and effectively, the board believes that the educational adequacy and physical condition of the district's facilities impacts student achievement. Furthermore, the board has a fiduciary responsibility to properly maintain the district's facilities. Whereas in order to provide quality learning environments and remain fiscally responsible, the board is determined that it is in the best interest of all students and residents of the district to develop and implement a long-range facilities plan. To develop the long-range facilities plan following a competitive selection process, the board authorized NEXUS Solutions, LLC, referred to as NEXUS, to work with the district's administration to complete the research necessary to draft a plan that could be implemented with a minimal increase or no increase to current local tax rates. Whereas described in Exhibit 1, the board thoroughly researched the district's capital improvement needs and presented the long-range facilities plan to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the board adopts the Group A projects as listed on Exhibit 2 as a portion of the long-range facilities plan for the district. By adopting the Group A projects, the board authorizes all necessary action to immediately implement this portion of the plan. Implementation of the Group A project is to be completed for a total amount not to exceed $252,000, and in accordance with all applicable Minnesota statutes. Be it further resolved that for all Group A projects included in Exhibit 2, the board authorizes completion of all work detailed in Exhibit 3, and directs the district's administrative staff to work with NEXUS Solutions, LLC, to complete this work. This will be adopted this 10th day of December, 2012. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution, or approve this resolution, sorry? By Tom? Second by Todd. Any comments or questions? Mike?
Did we have the Exhibits 1, 2, and 3 included in our board packet?
Yes. Any other comments or questions? Are these in the district office if someone wanted to see the different exhibits? Sue in.
I would just say that the first school board has been working very diligently with NEXUS to determine what these long-term facilities needs are, and to quantify them into our needs versus our wants, and then to further categorize them into Project A and B, A being things that we need to do immediately, that we need work completed on at this time. So I really commend the board on their work in really digging in and figuring this out and helping to get to this evening, tonight, where we have this document in front of us.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Martha?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
That motion passes, seven to zero. Good luck and start working. Okay, we'll move on to the demographic study. And are you going to introduce?
I'd be happy to. I'd like to introduce Jim Sheehan and Ann Thomas from schoolfinances.com. We asked them to complete a demographic study for us as we look at our trends moving forward. We know this year, we had a tremendous number of new students come to our district that we weren't expecting, as well as that long-term trend of when are we able to look forward and make some clear predictions? So they are here tonight, they have met previously with the facilities committee, as well as with the board in the study session, so this is their formal report. Welcome, Ann.
Thank you. Good evening. We're pleased to be here this evening to talk to you about the results of the demographic study and the enrollment projections that we completed for your district. We received a call from Dr. Grover in September, in which we came over and had a dialogue and talked about some work that we'll be getting, I think, in January with your growth task force, and so it was our understanding that an objective outside look was being asked for to help that group begin its work looking at facilities needs, and so we agreed to prepare five-year enrollment projections for the district. The work that we did to prepare the projections involved a lot of review and analysis of things. We prepared a demographic profile of your school district. We prepared a demographic profile of your school district. We have some software that allows us to define a geographic area and then apply a database of information to that to tell us what the population within that area looks like. It uses census data from 2000, 2010. It uses data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, from the Internal Revenue Service, from a credit level database that includes most households in the United States. And it gives us a lot of information, again, about what the district looks like today, but also what it will look like with projections in 2017. And the detail of all that work is in a separate supplement that we provided to you called the Census Geographic Report. And again, this details your population by gender, by ethnicity, by age. It tells us how many households are in the district, how many have children, the income levels of households, educational attainment, again, just a whole host of information about the population that helps inform us about how to make enrollment projections. We also looked at development trends, specifically looking at residential development that's being planned within your district, housing permits and building permits that have been issued in the last five years, and kind of what's maybe anticipated for the future. We spent a lot of time looking at the enrollment history of your district to understand how enrollment has changed, looking at open enrollment in and out of the district, looking at charter school enrollment and how it's changed, looking at the non-publics in your district and how the enrollment there has changed. Again, thinking about things that might have implications for your enrollment. We gathered birth information from the Minnesota Department of Health, looking at births by zip codes and births in the counties that have occurred within the last 10 years, again, to help inform us about how we should project kindergarten. And then we also did a series of interviews, and the purpose of the interviews was to make sure that there wasn't something being planned that would have implications for enrollment that we were not aware of. So we interviewed the city administrator of both Prior Lake and Savage. We talked with the chamber directors, again, of Prior Lake and Savage. We talked with the Scott County Planner. We visited with staff at the non-public schools. And we also talked to the realtor to get a sense, again, of housing turnover in your school district. From that, all that information helped us then make enrollment projections because the kind of the underlying understanding about projecting enrollment is that the best way to project future enrollment is to have a clear understanding of what's happened historically. So from all our work, we're just going to share a few observations that we gathered through all of our review and analysis. This first graph is from the Minnesota State Demographers Office, and it's from the 2010 census, and it presents the six fastest-growing counties in the state of Minnesota between 2000 and 2010. And Scott County, where you're located, no surprise, was the fastest-growing county between 2000 and 2010. The next graph looks at the population in your school district from the 2000 census, 2010, what's estimated in 2012, and 2017 projections. And we, from this information, we learned that the population in your district will increase by about 1.26 annually between, 1.26% annually between 2012 and 2017. This next graph looks at the youth population in your school district, the children between the ages of zero and 18. And essentially, what we learn from this is that the population of your children is going to remain stable between what's being estimated in 2012 and what's being projected The next graph looks at the women in childbearing years, the women between the ages of 18 and 34, and shows how those percentages of the population are projected to change between what's estimated in 2012 and what's being projected in 2017. And just for comparison's sake, I've shown the state of Minnesota on the right and the district percentages of women on the left. And so in your district, it appears that the percentage of women in childbearing years is going to decrease a bit between the estimates of 2012 and 2017. The next graph looks at the percentage of households in your school district with children, with or without school-aged children. And currently, we estimate that in the current year, about 48.9% of the households in your district have children. That's going to remain stable. It dips very slightly, 48.8% in 2017, but holding stable. So again, with respect to households with children, about the same for the next five Then we just have a few development trends to highlight with respect to. This graph looks at the building permits, the housing permits that have been issued in your school district communities from 2008 through 2012. And while things took a dip earlier, the last couple of years have shown an increase in the number of building permits of single-family homes that have been issued, as we know that the economy's warming up a bit. The next graph looks at the real estate sales that have occurred in the school district from 2008 through October of this year. So again, we would anticipate that the data shows us that an average of 396 single-family homes have sold in each year from 2008 through 2012. We would expect that the total number of home sales is probably going to surpass, single-family homes will surpass 2011 sales. Again, this data was only through October. And also during this time, we see an average of 209 townhomes annually sold within your Then looking a little bit at the enrollment history of your school district, we have some data that looks at how the enrollment of the neighboring districts in your school, the neighboring districts have, in comparison, that are adjacent to you, have changed. This looks at the enrollment percentage change, either positive or negative, that's occurred from 2005 through 2011, 12. And you'll notice the districts which are surrounding you in Scott County have all continued to increase in enrollment. The two districts that are your neighbors in Dakota County have declined in enrollment. This graph looks at the enrollment changes occurred from 2007, '08 through what was realized, what we're expecting to realize this year. And we see that overall, we've had an average growth of 105 students, 106 students each year since 2007, 2008.
Do you want me to bring up this one, too?
Would.
Another method that we use in looking at enrollment in future years is try to take a look at how the enrollment has changed in
(noise). Sorry.
How the enrollment has changed in each grade in the previous years. I were to ask you, what's your best projection for the number of seventh-grade students we'll have next year? First number you'd ask for is the number of sixth-grade students that we have this year. Students go from grade to grade. In addition to students moving from grade to grade, there are other changes of families moving into the district and families leaving the district. There are non-public schools and charter schools that discontinue grade levels at different grades. And there are, again, people moving in and moving out. The chart that Ann has placed on the board now takes a look at the last seven years of history and projections for the next five years, and it is our projection of the enrollment by grade that will be received in this school district. So if you follow along what I tried to describe, if you take a look at the changes at every grade level and add those together, then the last thing that you have to do is take a look at how many people, students are leaving our district in grade 12 and how many students are entering in kindergarten. So let's take a look at, I don't know if I know how to do this. Do I? How do you do it? That's the color I want? Okay, in this year, we have 524 students in grade 12 that will be leaving this year, and we are projecting at this time 484 students in kindergarten. So that is a natural reduction in enrollment right there. So if we look a little farther down on this, on this chart.
We love this.
The number going across the line that says 12 through K up here shows that, shows that in those years, we had more students entering kindergarten than were leaving in grade 12. That has now changed, and during this projection, we are anticipating that fewer students will enter kindergarten than will be leaving in grade 12. The other phenomena that is built within this, and I don't know if we'll go in right into the next slide now. So that talks about enrollment migration, and we see, using this method, we have had an enrollment increase in all of these years. The first enrollment decrease that we are predicting is a slight number of 8.8 students in the '16, '17 school year. Now, having said that, and do you want to go to the next slide? Yes, enrollment in public schools in Minnesota, 25, 30 years ago, if we could do a pure demographic study, property, development, moving. Now people are very reticent to move their household until they step off one rock and get on another one. But there are many parents, families that are using enrollment options, and the analysis of enrollment options into a district, out of a district, either to a neighboring public school, or a charter school, or a non-public school, becomes very, very important. And later, we'll talk about that is, we can't predict that. We can discuss the things that make your school district as attractive as possible in keeping your resident students and in enticing neighborhood, neighboring district students. But we don't know. It is, it is a large number of factors. It should be as no surprise to you as we look at a resident-student comparison for the Prior Lake School District in 2011, 12. And it's appropriate that you compare yourself and take a look at other districts of your approximate size in your approximate area. Let's look at this at your top. You had 7,210 resident students. You served 6,439 of them, or 89.3% of your resident students were served in this school district. There were 771 students that were served by other school districts and charters. And there were students served, and then it breaks down, the students served by districts and by charter, and then we also have some, some data for students in, in non-public schools on this. Don't we know we don't have it on this one? So all in all, you were at 89%, and the average of these districts was at 91%. What makes a school district attractive for a student to option in? Well, programs and finances are the two, and it should be as no surprise to you that Minnetonka serves the largest number of their students. And in addition to serving their students, they have over 500 students that option, that option into the district. Just a few short years ago, Ann and I met with Minnetonka and Hopkins, and these districts are actively dialoguing, marketing their school districts to neighboring schools. So how this school district fares in your work to attract, become attractive to the students in your district and to neighboring students is something that has to be seen. What are some of the features? Immersion schools are one. ALC, as you said, you have to find an ALC program here, and I compliment you for that. And all-day, everyday kindergarten is becoming very popular, and it's a rassling match to figure out how some of this is afforded. But I wanted to show you this, and I wanted to say to you, when someone says, well, can't you project for 10 years? Or could we project for 15 or 20 years? It's very, very difficult, because what happens is just a factor of too many variables. And some of those variables are how you all, as a board, represent yourself within the community to show cohesiveness and strong educational program. I've looked at the test scores in this school district, and you have nothing to feel bad about, and I'm sure you know that. So don't be afraid to say that. And I'm getting away from a demographic study here, but I'm talking about the dynamics of enrollment projection and enrollment planning in school districts.
This is just kind of piggybacking on what Jim was talking about in a broader, broad look. This shows the difference between your resident students who have open enrolled or enrolled to charter school and non-resident students who have open enrolled to your district, and it shows the difference between the two. And so over time, you lose more students than you gain from enrollment options. And this graph, the other observation with respect to the charter school in your district, this shows, the black bar shows us the enrollment of Aspen Enrollment, or excuse me, Aspen Academy since 2008, 2009. And then the red bar represents those students at Aspen who are resident of your district. So you see how, over time, those students have matriculated there. And then this graph looks at the non-public enrollment of the two non-public in your district, St. Mike's and Prior Lake Christian Academy, shows how the enrollment has changed. Neither of those schools at this time are planning to add facilities or grades, and so we would not anticipate any change, any dramatic change in their enrollment than what we've seen trending here. The next observations we're going to share just relate to birth data, and we just have a graph which represents the births and the zip codes served by your district. We're looking at 55372, 55378, 55379, 55352. Again, 2007, it looks like there was a peak, and since that time, it's just kind of been a lessening of the births. And the most recent data we have is from 2011, so we don't know what 2012 looks like yet. We use this data to project kindergarten enrollment by looking at the relationship between the births in a given year and then translating that, looking at how between the births in a given year, and then translating that, looking at how, um, kindergarten five years later, um, compares to that number. So we, we get a sense of the ratio, the percentage of births, uh, in a given year, and, and kind of historically average those together so that we have a general idea of what percentage of births may turn into enrollment in five years, and that's, that's how we use this information. So from all the observations that we made, then, we developed some enrollment projections based on these observations, based on kind of the, the slow, steady growth that we see. Again, we see growth, but not anything, certainly not comparing with what you had in the last decade, just more slow, steady. And we use three years of history and average the, the rate of change between those three years to project what we believe will happen in your district in the next five years. And this graph then shows from the current year what we anticipate to happen with enrollment through two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And from that, we have some recommendations.
I, uh, we, we, we touched on this, uh, and the first point is simply, you have to look at your enrollment every year. School districts can no longer plan once every two years, once every five years. You have to plan and be right on top of it. The October first is the fall date of the enrollment, and how many of those students are we retaining all the way through the year to the end that turn into our financial students? So our first recommendation is, uh, and, and we have, and Julie is, uh, well aware of our program, we call Enrollment Projection, NPRO, and she has that, and you can use that on a continuing basis, uh, each year. You just have to update it with your enrollment history. So the first thing is absolutely to, to take a look, uh, every year. Uh, and, and in addition to looking at your enrollment projections, you should monitor the enrollment projections of, uh, of neighboring school districts and of, and of charter schools, and, uh, I'm suggesting that you take a look at, at your program offerings to see if there's a, uh, if you know of parents that, uh, uh, we did some work with, with Eden Prairie. They were losing a large number of students to, uh, to, uh, charter schools and neighboring school districts. And, uh, they, uh, they said, do you think if we, if we begin a Spanish immersion elementary school, any of these could come back? And we sat down and looked at the numbers a little bit, and then they were able to monitor that, and they were very surprised at, uh, it, it, it's not, it's not an easy program to begin, because if there are only so many slots in it, it can become a, can become a, a challenge in, in that respect also. But, uh, as a school board and as a school district, you want to make your schools as attractive as possible for your resident students and for the students in neighboring school districts. What, for, for whatever reason, say, we want to go to Prior Lake. That's where we want to go to school. So I would, uh, simply say, monitor that, and those are our, those are our basic two, uh, uh, recommendations. One of the things that, that we advocate is, is that use a committee process to plan enrollment in your school district, and, uh, we, we strongly believe in, in a committee process. Some, some members would be school district staff, and others would not be. Others might be, um, people involved in the preschool, uh, programs in, in your school district. Uh, just people, people that are widely respected and are analytical by nature, love to come together to talk about things like enrollment, not dollars, but they like to talk about enrollment a little bit more. And so we would certainly advocate the use of a committee, and, uh, we also have some guidelines that we would share with you if, if, if you opt to do something. I don't know, Sue Ann, if you have that yet or not.
In addition to the, the written report and the supplement of the census geographic report, we also, Jim alluded to, um, Julie has, uh, an Excel-based system called NPRO that has your enrollment history, and it has, she has the copy that, that we shared that shows the assumptions that we made, and so you have the ability to model your own assumptions if you don't like these numbers and, uh, and want to do some other what-ifs. You have the ability to do that very easily with this system. It also, um, there's also a worksheet in it that will allow you to make projections for ten years, so if you, if you do want to take a look at what ten-year projections might look like, you have the ability to do that with the system as well.
I have one. A couple of numbers jumped out at me that don't seem jive. On your observation number three, you said the total number of children, zero to eighteen is supposed to remain stable. And then your observation number, um, ten says we lose, uh, we have less kids coming in through kindergarten than we have going out in twelfth grade, and then the district loses more students to charter schools. So all those three numbers are either stable or going down. So why, on your final graph, you continue to project school age population going down, number of kids coming into the district? So the first, first three observations I cited seem to point to everything either stable or going down, but then your bar graph, your bar chart, tends to project up.
Up slightly, not the, the projections are not, are not a huge increase, but a gentle, a gentle, uh, increase for a few years, and then leveling off at the end of five. And, um, with respect to how we arrived at them, it's just using the, the history that was in the system and then making observations about the future. So some of the kids that are being impacted, or that are part of the numbers that you're seeing are already here, so they're just moving through the system.
Our first grade, are we seem to have fewer kids may, may not come to kindergarten here, but they do come back before a district in first grade, and so that's one of the areas that they, we will see, that we make up some problems, makes us more stable.
In, in the current school year, which is twelve, thirteen, you had a positive, a positive migration at every grade. So there is still movement into the community of, of, with, with students in three, four, five, six, seven, and when we get down to ten, eleven, and twelve, we're, we're declining on a grade-to-grade progression basis. So we anticipate that that will continue. So that's what balances off those other factors.
So migration into the district.
Are there any other questions? I was gonna ask a question. What Julie said is, was there any weight kind of given to the first grade? Because to me, it looked like first grade population is, I mean,
It's a positive, yes. It grows every year, and it has historically too. Yes.
So when we're talking about kids going out of building, I mean, I realize kindergarten coming in, but it's almost like we don't look at what your first grade is, because you're getting thirty, forty, sometimes more kids each year.
And that same phenomenon of, excuse me, is occurring in Burnsville as well, that they, they get a big jump every year at, at grade one as well, so. And I don't know, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, maybe it's because of some of the preschool providers that have a, a kindergarten program that don't come here, and then they're, they come to your school as first graders?
Is that common throughout Minnesota? Or?
Within these two districts are the only two that I'm aware of.
Is there any other points as to which, like, you would highlight that we get,
Get more students?
Get more students at certain ages, anywhere it would affect our building?
That, that's, that's the big jump. From the non-publics.
And nine, three.
That's true, yes. Grade nine.
Mike? You said you met with representatives from Aspen Academy also?
I, I called repeatedly, I drove over and, and tried to see someone, but I was not successful.
Okay. Cause that's probably, you know, it'd be interesting to know with their new building, if they're, you know, erecting. I'm assuming that that's going to increase their capacity from where they're at right now, and I think if you look at, you know, our net loss of, of students via open enrollment versus coming or going, you know, we had a year or two there where we actually were gaining a few more than we were losing, but ever since Aspen has opened, obviously families are making that choice, which is theirs to make. Um, but I would suspect that if they are going to be adding capacity, that that may have, you know, further impact on us, at least for a couple of years till they stabilize.
Right, at grade eight.
And, and is that factored into the numbers as well? Okay, cause I, I am aware of some kids, uh, just coincidentally, just because of my son being a sixth grader moving to middle school, and some sixth graders that now have moved to our school district from Aspen. And I guess is that because they haven't had middle school at Aspen to date? Is that their plan to, is that their plan to add it?
My understanding is they go through grade eight.
So you're confident, though, that, that, that those plans are embedded in the, the enrollment projections that you've given?
Yes.
This, uh, this, and this is appendix, what, of the, uh? This, uh, appendix shows in kindergarten in, in eleven, twelve, that was last, last year. In kindergarten, you had seventy-three point seven students served in other districts, and you served sixty-seven from, from other districts here. So that, that was a net loss in kindergarten of six point six students. Now, the positive numbers down here were in grade six and in, and in grade eight, was where you were serving more students from other districts than were leaving from other districts. So this is kind of a, uh, a, a row that, 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 that I look at. And, and it shows your, your deficit in eleven, twelve was one hundred and six.
Is there any other question? Thank you. We'll move on now to, um, the final two thousand twelve, thirteen budget.
This evening's discussion, um, will be about the final budget for two thousand twelve, thirteen. As you know, last June, the board, um, approved a preliminary budget, and now we will talk about the final budget and any changes that have happened since last June. First, I'll talk about the revenue changes. These are mainly due to increased enrollment and special education. Um, we are getting some additional general education aid because the additional students that we, um, we received, but we weren't projecting back in June. So we definitely received, um, had an influx of students over the summer, and we are reflecting the revenue based on that influx of students. And we're getting, um, about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in additional general education aid, and that includes all this other funding like gifted and talented and those kinds of areas for our gen aid. We're also receiving some operating capital, about twenty-five thousand dollars in operating capital. We have additional referendum revenue, about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And then I'm projecting that we'll receive some additional special education revenue because we have additional needs, additional programs that we are serving for those students. So we'll receive an additional two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So overall, it's about a million dollars, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars of additional revenue that we'll receive for this year that we're projecting and budgeting for. I do want to talk about our expenditures, and I mainly want to talk about, um, some staffing that, so that you have an idea and a feel for what our staffing has been since last June. Um, in June, we added about seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of additional staffing, and you can see those there, four point four FTE of high school teaching staff, and our deans of students at the high school because of the, um, larger numbers that we do have at our high school, and some other areas throughout the district that we have added staffing. That number was included in our preliminary budget, so that's not part of the change in our final budget, but I did want to, um, show that. Um, as you can see, in July, then, we added three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of additional staffing at the middle schools, some media, paratime, um, and some, um, four point eight FTE of elementary staffing, and then some ELL staff. In July, we added, the board approved those additions. In August, again, we came back to the board and asked for a point five FTE kindergarten teacher at Edgewood, um, some additional para hours at Five Hogs, and another teaching staff at Jeffers Pond, so another hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars of staffing. And then in September, when we found out we had as many kindergarten staff as we did, we added some para hours at Edgewood and Glendale, um, another one point oh FTE teaching staff at Sage Academy at Westwood, and, um, point two FTE at the middle school, and a point three FTE at the high school for another hundred and sixty-three thousand. So overall, from last year's staffing to this year's staffing, we have one point four million dollars of additional staff that we have added, um, in the district. Um, about seventy-one percent of that is direct classroom, um, staffing, um, and for our students. In addition, last June, the board approved six hundred thousand dollars for technology for district-wide computers, wireless at the Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks Middle Schools and Prior Lake High School. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that is ongoing computer leasing costs for an additional two years. And then in November, the board came back to us, or we came to the board and asked for another two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in, um, technology for wireless at all of our elementary schools and the district-wide data warehouse that the board and the district has been talking about for several years. And we are anticipating at a high end, sixty thousand dollars of ongoing data warehouse costs, and depending on the program that, um, ends up being decided and chosen, that number could vary, and most likely would be someone, a number less than that. So that's an additional expenditure, um, for this year's budget over last year's. Capital and deferred maintenance projects, um, with the approval of the projects earlier, um, in the meeting, um, we have budgeted for a one point five, six million dollars of our fund balance in the restricted areas. That means it can only be used for those specific purposes of deferred maintenance and capital improvements. We'll be using some fund balance in these areas to help, um, complete those projects. Innovative programming, one of the areas that the district has, or the board has assigned, um, some specific money to is innovative programming, and we're anticipating some additional professional development needs for the current year to implement the following innovative programs. ESTEM is a hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. QComp, twenty-seven thousand, one twenty-five, and the data warehouse, another twenty-seven thousand, one twenty-five, for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'd like to be moved and assigned for these specific purposes. In anticipation that we'll have approval of the QComp program in our district, we'd like to move some money into an assigned category specific for that purpose. Um, we're on, um, because of the timing of QComp and when our levy is, we are able to levy for those dollars, we are unable to levy for two thousand and thirteen for QComp, and so therefore, we would like to move some money into an assigned category for this purpose, and, um, purpose and for the first year of implementation of that QComp. This is our estimated fund balance and information for this year. As you can see, our unassigned operating is increasing for this year, about $900,000. And as we go through this list, we have a non-spendable category, and that is for any prepaid programs that we may have for next year that we anticipate that we'll pay this year and will be for next year's programming. And then we have our different assigned areas. And these are specific areas that the board has approved us to reserve this money for these specific purposes, and those are the federal special ed stimulus dollars. We still have some money left over from that that we are continuing to spend down. Redtail Ridge, this is the last year of that. We'll spend about $107,000, and that will be the final year of our Redtail Ridge. And then we do have kept back $2 million specific for cash flow purposes when the state shifted our dollars down to the 64.36. And I know that you have all heard that that has now changed to eighty-two and a half percent. So that number is, we are able to see some of those dollars coming back to the district now. We have some two-year program additions that the board approved for those deans of students for two years. That's a specific assignment. Some class size reduction dollars. You can see that we spent $563,000 in class size reduction this year, and we're reserving another 500 for next year. Innovative programs, we had $500,000. We're adding that and spending another 250 in that area, but we still want to reserve that 500,000 for any new innovative programs that we have, the ESTEM, any integration or immersion programs that we may have, or all-day kindergarten that we may anticipate for any future needs there. Our one-time technology needs, we have reserved that, those funds for technology, and the QComp that we discussed earlier. And then we have all the restricted areas. If you look down towards the end of that, the operating capital, you can see that we are spending that fund balance down along with the line number seven there, the deferred maintenance. Those are the two areas that we're spending those fund balances. However, we are still reserving $1 million in operating capital for any emergency needs that we may have in that area that we are not anticipating. So overall, we are spending down a little bit of our budgets overall, from $11,369 to $10,748 for the current year. And then in food service, that fund is staying the same. There's no change there. Community education has some small changes for different programming that they have. As you can see, they're planning on spending down that fund balance as well. Our building fund will finally be eliminated this year. That was for our Glendale roofing, that we finally finished that project up, and that fund will go away. I can see our debt service is staying the same from our preliminary budget, and same with our internal service fund in our revocable trust. So those are the entire budgets that we have, the final budget for this year. Any questions about any of this?
I have one. Julie, the federal special stimulus money, does that have to be spent by a certain date in time?
It was spent, but we had reserved it as part of our general fund, and so we were kind of swapping some money to keep that going throughout the years. So we planned on a four-year spend down of that.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the budget for 2012-13, final budget? Stacy, second?
You wanted me to, huh?
Any comments or questions? Well, we went over this in our workshop, headlink. We've had good review and questions. I think we all understand where it's at. So if there are no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Petlusian carries seven zero. Thank you, Julie. Are you pulling the generator? This is your night.
Again, as part of the nexus solutions, and this was really, we started this last spring discussing the possibility of adding generators at Redtail Ridge and Jefferson Pond. The board approved us to move ahead with that project, and now we're finally bringing a leasing agreement to the board for approval. We are going through Prior Lake State Bank, our local bank, and they're working with us, and we're leasing through Kinetic Leasing. We are asking for $547,305 for a lease over the next ten years, or fifteen years, excuse me, as a financing term of 3.25 percent. And this will be paid for by the savings that we will see in our energy costs by utilizing the generators. So there is no cost to our general fund. It's really a swap. The savings are paying, is paying for the cost of the lease.
Hey, do I have a motion to accept the generator lease? It's on, second?
Second.
It's on. Any comments or questions?
I have, there's one, the purchase option, so at the end of the fifteen years, if you want to keep the generator, we just purchase it for a dollar. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. And now we're on the fall activities update. Eric? Ready back there?
I'm playing. I'm there with Julie talking.
Wow, that's the third one tonight. You should have seen the text I was getting from a couple of people in the audience about how brief they wanted me to be tonight. We won't mention who. I think you can probably pick them out. All right. Chair Shimick and board, thanks for having me tonight. We're going to review the fall activities. We had an exciting fall, and it just keeps getting better every year. So we'll review this really quick, and then we'll go through some other things as well. Adaptive soccer, 10-2, once again made it to the state. They were section champions. I went over to Stillwater to watch their first couple rounds of state, and I know, Dr. Groover, you and I have been over there in the past. They lost to a tough park center team, and then in the Constellation bracket, they lost 5-4 in overtime. And then the team that they lost to ended up winning the Constellation final. But another great year for our adaptive soccer program. That's a co-op between Chaska, Chan, Shakopee, and ourselves, and it truly is sport at its truest sense. It's a lot of fun. Football, another fabulous year for the football team. DJ was a strong part of that, playing strong safety the entire year. Nine and two, conference champions for the first time since 1997. Section champion, I put that on there, but this was that weird new crossover that they had with 6A football. So there wasn't a true section champion, and it ended up being, the state tournament ended up being four schools from the late conference and four from the South Suburban. So, but a great feat to be the conference champions, only our third year in it. Boys soccer, 6-10-1, fifth in the conference. Last year, had a little better record. Same result as last year in the section semis. We traveled on the road in the quarters and beat Minnetoka 3-2, and then lost to eventual state qualifying Jefferson in the semifinals. Well fought game, but came up a little short. Girls soccer, 13-4. I improved drastically from last year. Unfortunately, lost in the semis like we did last year as well to a tough Indian Prairie team. I think Stacy, you were at that game, you know, played well, and I think had our chances. I was over at the boys' game, but a tough loss there. And Ian Pro eventually qualified for the state. Tennis, you saw the tennis players tonight. Absolutely unbelievable season. Nineteen, two and one. They got one was rained out, or rained before the final matches could be played, so that was a tie. Conference champions, that was the same as last year, so they were repeat conference champions. Section three AA champs, state third place. As I said earlier, lost a heartbreaker in the semis to Minnetoka. All of our singles were up after the first set, and then lost in the second set, and a few of them lost in the third to make it 4-3 for Minnetoka, but then rallied and beat Century in the third place game. That's the best that the girls tennis has ever done. Last time that a state team qualified was 1991. Our head coach was voted the double A coach of the year by all the other coaches in the state. So great honor for Chris. Swimming and diving, didn't quite do as well as last year on paper, but had another phenomenal season. As you can see, section runner-up, conference runner-up, section true team runner-up, and last year, we were champions in all of that. State, 25th this year, which dropped a little bit. Cross-country girls, almost identical to last year. As I said earlier, 10th year in a row qualifying for state, pretty amazing feat. And as Coach Dan Sod said last year, he goes, "We don't rebuild, we reload." And it truly is the case. His top runners this year weren't even on varsity last year, they were JV runners. And they do, they absolutely reload. Boys cross-country, ninth in conference, so that was the same as last year. However, we did qualify a state runner for the first time since '91, Jimmy White, absolutely outstanding kid, quality individual. He qualified for state and had a great experience. And with that, as you can see, the girls and the boys and the enlarging of our program, I think it's going to help to have a coach that specifically focuses on the boys' program, and hopefully we can get them to that state as well. Volleyball, 14-11. 10-16, improved their record from last year. Seventh in the conference, that's actually the same as last year, and lost in the section quarterfinals to Chaska. Last year, we lost to Chan-Hasten in the quarters, same type of thing. Fall musical was Into the Woods. Best performance I've seen in my five years here. I thought it was absolutely outstanding. For those of you that went, I thought the singing was unbelievable. I brought my daughter, she loved it. Attendance was down from last year. Last year, the musical was Footloose. I think that by name itself brought more people in, but I thought performance-wise, this was absolutely incredible. Our marching band, I can't say enough about them. They haven't had any, run any tournaments or anything like that, but to see where they've come from, we have a new band teacher as well as Keith, and the performances that they put on in the halftime and then their fall performance was absolutely incredible. The movements that they do now and the dancing, it's just a lot of fun. And our choir, once again, is incredible. Their performance for a holiday concert unfortunately is tonight, and I'd like to be there, but I'd like to be here as well. And you can't, why do everything? So, but another great, great year for them. To give you a little update on Russ, you know, he was approved this last summer, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about what Russ has done to enhance our program. I've got the website on there, and I'm probably going off of what you have a little bit. I added some things. And I won't take the time to look at it now, but if you have time, and I know some of you that have students in the high school, have been to our website. Our website is second to none to anybody in the state I will put up against, and that is Russ's vision right there with that website. And I was actually talking to a parent the other day from Council Bluffs, Iowa, who's moving up to our school district, and she was talking about opportunities, and she sees some of the things. I told her to go to our website, she called back and was simply amazed at what we have. So when you have time, go through and kind of look at that. Coach's education, Russ kind of took that bull by the horns right there. We have many coaches that need to get further education. Pro to the Minnesota State High School League, he kind of jumped all over the top of that and has taken that and streamed like that. Supervision, obviously, that was one of the things that we looked at implementing. Russ and I have kind of split up fall and winter, and it's been a good thing. However, I don't know if my wife's really happy that I've been home a couple of nights more than I have been. Video streaming, we video stream, in the fall, we video stream soccer, volleyball, and football. This winter, we're video streaming both boys and girls hockey and boys and girls basketball, as well as trying to get some other sports. Along with that, that's all within our website as well, and now you don't have to click on going to another website. It's all inclusive with that. Russ has also done a lot with the huddle, which is the editing software that most of our sports use for training tools. Intermerals, tonight, there's over 100 kids signed up right now for their intermaral basketball. So that is starting as of tonight. It's, yeah, I think we've created a monster, Chair Shimick, which is a great thing.
That's great news.
Yep. And then construction. We've kind of done a few tweaks and changes throughout the high school, and Russ has kind of, to make our programs better, kind of taken lead on that. So those are just some of the things that he's implemented within our department, and it's been a wonderful experience having him with us. Looking at some of the surveys, sorry, Jim, I know I'm over time limit already, but just some comparisons to last year, and, you know, we kind of go through these every year. We had about eight more responses than we did last fall. Coach advisor has knowledge down a little bit, and this is with the parents, working toward excellence down. Strong offseason program down. Coach advisor, quality role model, right about the same. But season was enjoyable for my student, was actually up 4 percent. So I think that's an important one there. Fundamentals and strategy down, and then coach acting professional model, still quite high on that one, which I'm very good about. However, student survey, down in responses once again, which, you know, I need, I've said this in the past, we need to get another way of figuring this out so they can do it. Programs striving for excellence, down about 18 percent, which is not very good. But was it rewarding? And this has taken all activities and all athletics from the fall. Moore said it was much more rewarding. Did my teammates and coaches respect me? Yes, 90 percent. Do I want to play for the same staff is up 20 percent. And was it enjoyable? And I think that's always the first thing that we're looking at. Activities are supposed to be fun, bless you. And when you see that number in the eighties, I think that's a pretty good number, even with the low students on the survey. Give you an update on what's going on South Suburban-wise. Farmington application to join our conference in 2014, so not for next year, but the year after, is going to be voted on tomorrow. That'll be Mr. Lund will be placing that vote tomorrow. And this just came out via Twitter today, which is a great tool. Shakopee, from the last I heard, and I sent this out to a couple people. As far as I knew before today, they were, Shakopee was staying there, but apparently there's an article out in the Shakopee news that Mr. Jenke is looking for a recommendation from the Shakopee School Board tonight to go forward and put in an application. So that's news to me, but I wanted to share that with you tonight. And then Chaska and Chan and Jefferson Kennedy are still looking for other opportunities by either creating a new conference or trying to find another conference to fit in. Minnesota State High School League, this is coming from the last Board of Directors meeting, and I thought this was really cruel, cool. The Minnesota State, yeah, that was, that came out in a minute. The High School League is now creating a partnership with the Clay Target League, which is something that, you know, this board, three years ago now, there was 11 teams in the state, and this board looked at it and said, yes, this is something we want to do. And now it's And now it's, it's such a big program that it's gonna partner with the Minnesota State High School League. Um, so, you know, we were kinda one of the teams on the forefront of this, and, uh, and that's where this program has gone. So, so I thought that was pretty a- awesome. Um, coaching requirements, and I've talked to a couple of you about this. Um, the state legislature came out and said, hey, um, hundreds of coaches are not technically, um, eligible to be coaches. So, um, there are new coaches' requirements that, uh, current head coaches are, are having to take, and the, and the league is coming up with a way to train all of these coaches at one time, um, instead of, uh, coaches just trying to inundate the program. And then, uh, new competitive sections will be made in March, uh, will be interesting, I don't know, some of you probably heard St. Thomas Academy is going to opt up and some things, and right now, um, kinda all the players are going and, and saying whether they wanna opt up or opt down, and then we'll find out, uh, we play in our tournaments coming up. Um, very quickly, I wanna talk about some things that, uh, I've implemented this year, um, with our, with our head coaches and then, uh, with each program. I went to a, uh, a study this summer with about eleven different, uh, athletic directors, um, throughout the state, and, uh, we did a book study on, on this book called Inside-Out Coaching by Joe Irman. Uh, he's a former defensive, um, defensive tackle for the Baltimore Colts, and he's a coach, he was a, was a coach out in the Baltimore area. And, um, some things that, that we still wanna look at, um, when we're, when we're working with our kids, and I think that goes back to the survey, is, did you have fun? You know, how'd you do? Numbers stay the same. Um, these numbers haven't changed since all of us were in high school. Um, there's still one percent of the kids are earning Division One scholarships, um, and three percent go on to play any level at college. Those numbers don't change. Now, we've seen some great things, and we put it out this fall, I think, um, you know, we signed, uh, seven kids to Division One or Division Two scholarships, and, and so those things are going the right way. Um, but there's four questions, and I've implemented these within my, uh, within my, um, postseason meeting with the coaches, and, and I asked them to come with, with these answers. Uh, one is, why do I coach? You know, try to look at the heart of it, what, you know, why do you coach? And, what is your purpose behind that? Um, why do I coach the way that I do? You know, what's your background? Why do you coach that way? Why is that your style? And then, you know, I think these ones really hit hard. You know, what, how does it feel to be coached by me? And that's something that we really gotta take a look at and look in the mirror, you know, am I out here doing this and yelling and screaming, or do I truly care? And how does it feel? How does it feel to those kids when they go home at night to be coached by me? Because we spend a lot of time with, with these kids. And then the last one, how do I define success? You know, is it the wins or losses, or is it more than that? Is it back to that, you know, was the season enjoyable? Um, was it a season of importance? Was it a season of impact? Um, and then along with that, I think many more of these, uh, programs are picking up on the, on the leadership training and the things that we're doing. Uh, football, the Live and Ride Program, uh, which I know DJ was a part of. Um, and then, Coach Gagenheimer is starting his leadership groups, uh, this week, um, with his, with his, uh, players for next year already. Um, soccer, uh, both of them are having bi-weekly meetings. Julie Lundquist, the assistant soccer coach is running the girls program, uh, and then Mike Shabaski, the head boys coach is, is running his, and, and Mike is actually implementing, um, meeting with a small group bi-weekly and then, and then monthly meetings with a larger group to incorporate, uh, more of the younger kids along the line, which I think is huge. Um, football, or, uh, volleyball, um, Mike brought each of his kids, um, a, a book called Little Book of Talent, and it has little lessons in there, um, that they would go through weekly and, and talk about. And then I still have my Student Activity Advisory Council meetings every other Friday, where we discuss different leadership things and goal things. Um, and then also implementing within, uh, PLA Y, and we've really tried to hit the Positive Coaching Alliance hard this winter. Um, my son came home the other day, he's a fourth grade in-house, um, basketball player, and he had his, uh, his Positive Coaching Alliance little badge, and he goes, "Dad, what does L mean again?" So, we went through that process, and that's what we wanna do with those kids, is, is, is talk about those type of things. So, those are some of the things do, that we're trying to do culturally, um, throughout our high school. Any questions for me?
I have one. Eric, when, when does the head coaching licensing certificate go into effect?
Um, what the league has told us, I mean, it's, according to Roger Aronson and, um, the state legislature, this has always been in effect, but, um, what has happened is, you know, if it's a non-certified coach, they've had to go through coaches' training, but if it was a certified teacher and board-approved, they, the High School League has, in the past, said that's what you need. Well, now they're looking at the law more specifically, and they're saying, no, um, they need additional coaches' training beyond that. Now, when I was in college, um, and when, like, Mr. Lund was in college a long time ago, they actually had the coaching minor and the coaching, coaching licensers, but they, the colleges eliminated that in the early nineties. So, there hasn't been that opportunity to even get that and put it, and, um, Department Education hasn't recognized those and put them on, on, uh, our certificates. So, they're looking at reworking that and then, um, training our coaches that have vet, been veterans, they're gonna train them more in the summertime and worry about the new head coaches now.
So, when will it, is there any date that?
They haven't given us a specific date yet.
Um, you know, for this, for the training, is there ongoing training that they have to do?
There is, so, coaches-
The ones that, that do have the, the certificate?
Yes, they still do the, there's, there's four modules that the Minnesota State High School League does, and they continually upgrade those, so, they, they'll take the four modules, and then, let's say they took it when it was first implemented in, in twenty-eleven, it, that'll be good for three years, and then they, they'll keep adding to it. And what they've kinda done is they've kinda shifted, like, the rules meeting is all online, and you have to go through this process before you can take the rules interpretation meeting, which they have to do before they start the season.
So, you said five of ours qualify now, or five of them need to qualify?
Five of them will need to, to qualify, yep.
I guess, um, my only comment would be, um, is hopefully we can get more than thirty-five responses for the kids. I know that's something we need to work on, but, um, I think it's hard to look at information from the number of kids that we have participating, and we have to just have thirty-five responses.
I agree. I absolutely agree.
And I know it's, maybe gift cards, give out an incentive. Try something that works sometimes.
Instead of practice.
Yeah, yeah.
But, is it just the varsity kids that are?
No, it's nine to twelve. Yep. So, if we're looking at fall, that'd be six hundred and seventy kids, maybe even more.
Two percent.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Any other questions? Good job, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Cut up. Well, now that we're behind, we'll move on to the Growth Task Force Committee roster and charge statement. Sueann?
Yes, yes it is. Um, earlier this evening, you heard the demographic study report, um, and, uh, that our enrollment is going to be staying steady and growing slowly or gently as we go through these next five predictable years, hopefully. Um, and in so doing, we also know that our high school is currently at and over many days capacity. Uh, we have taken, uh, many tours of the building to watch what happens during the school day, and I know our school board members have been there also, and, uh, we have extremely, um, courteous and wonderful students that are there to learn and, and to get the most out of their high school experience. But there are a lot of them, and our classrooms are becoming, uh, a really prized commodity. As we look to next year, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we've been able to, with Mr. Lund to be able to figure out two more classrooms to accommodate students, but again, that's a short-term fix. So, with the demographic study now in hand, with our decision resources study completed now in hand, it's time for us to look at our, very specifically at our high school capacity and what solutions long-term we can create together with our community. So, um, there is a charge statement on, in your board packet, um, that the board has crafted, uh, worked on together at our study session last time, a bit, I think, and then we worked on a little bit more after that, uh, to try to get, to say exactly what we wanted to, that this is a short-term study focused specifically and only at the high school level for a long-term solution. We'd like for this group to begin in January and to complete their work on or before March fourth. This is a short period of time, but with all of this front work done ahead of time, we believe that it's a doable, um, uh, timeframe, um, and, and is, uh, important for the group to have this, um, charge statement in order to complete their work. And then in addition to that, I have the Growth Task Force roster here for you. Um, the one thing I noticed while I was sitting here is we don't, I think in our last Growth Task Force, we did have a couple of student reps on that committee. Uh, we have added to the, the ongoing membership, a couple of, uh, community members who have expressed interest in being on this, as well as a few more high school teachers, since this will focus only on the high school. It felt important, uh, imperative really, that we have representatives from different departments at the high school. So, um, we have added a few high school teachers, and Mr. Lund has asked them for, uh, their willingness to serve, and they have agreed to do so. So, before you tonight, um, for your review and, and vote, is, uh, the roster as well as the charge statement, that is your board.
You have a motion to accept, or to approve the charge statement and the Growth Task Force members for two thousand thirteen Growth Task.
I'll make that motion.
By Rich? Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Mike, left stream.
What's that?
Oh, you must, you want to say Growth Task.
Well, I see my father will be on there again. I know he's enjoyed, uh, the previous ones he's been part of, and I'm sure he's looking forward to participating again.
If he chooses not to, we know your number.
No worries.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? That motion carries seven-zero.
I have one more thing.
Yes.
Um, on here, we put our school board members that will be voting members, that's Tommy Anderson, Todd Sorensen, and Rich Wolf, and then, we have an alternate who will be Stacy Ruel and Lee Shimick. And then, other mem, our other two members of the school board beginning in January that will be non-voting members will be Chad Rittenhour and Dan White, as they come onto the school board, we felt it'd be, uh, fair to them to ask them to be a part of it if they choose to be at any time, that they would be non-voting members. Alternates and non-voting members would be sitting back at this table.
Um, we'll move on to policy. Um, at our workshop, we discussed the, the following policies, um, school board officers in membership, open meetings and closed meetings, and school board committees. This would be our second reading, um, and possibly our final reading, unless there is a reason to bring it back to a future meeting. Does anyone have any questions on any of the policies in general, or do you wanna go through each one?
I know there were questions about some wording and some verbiage, and we changed that back to the way it was previously. Other than that, there have not been any substantive changes to the policies as you saw them at our last, um, study session. And the reason why we were thinking that this would be the second reading is that these three policies impact only the board and the committee structures and the open and closed meetings. Without any substantive changes, we felt that it was, it was okay to bring it back for a second reading, if you're comfortable with that.
Any comments or questions? And then I'll take a motion to approve the policies. Stacy? Second?
I'll second it.
Am I? Um, any other comments or questions? My only comment would be that there'll be, there's a, because of the changes in the policy, we can now make a few other changes on the, um, our committee structure chart. I think Martha will probably do that one. With that, I'll take a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. Land administrative reports?
Yes, um, it seems like we've had a, a focus on two things tonight. One has been, um, the thank you that we do for our outgoing board members. Um, Eric Pratt was here earlier for a small reception, but Mike Murray is here this evening, and Martha Hoover. Um, all three of these people have given tirelessly of their time and energy and efforts and talent to this school board, whether it's, uh, coming on and off, as Martha has been willing to do, and we thank you for that, Martha. Uh, you are a wonderful advocate for children, and we respect that. Um, or if it's like, uh, with Eric and Mike, who have been on our board, uh, nine and eleven years, I believe it is, um, and have seen our district go through hard times, lean times, difficult times, um, and exciting, uh, new movement times, too. Uh, and through all of that, they have been a steady hand and a steady guide as we move forward. Relationships that you build with the school board, um, are really critical to the ongoing viability of the school district. So, for all of you, for all three of you, um, um, in Eric's absence, thank you, uh, again, um, your contributions are timeless to us. So, we appreciate that, and I appreciate it as a superintendent. And the second theme has been our South Suburban Conference. Just a few years ago, we were, we were part of the Minnesota Conference, and, uh, we were not doing so well. Um, and when it was brought forward, the school board at that time was very, very excited about the opportunities that being in a South Suburban Conference would offer us, the new challenges and the opportunities for our students to, to play, uh, against students. They, they did so when they were younger, and now would continue on with that tradition. Um, and we have had great success in our South Suburban Conference, and that is due to our leadership, um, at the building and at the, um, athletic director level, as well as our coaches. Uh, and our students are continuing to amaze us with the kinds of successes that they, that we see them do. So, it is really with great excitement that all of us get to recognize our, our fall sports. But also tonight, you heard about our fall play, our, our marching band, the choir concert tonight. Uh, we have, uh, both a wonderfully rich, um, athletic and activity program department, and then we have our band and choirs that are just really exemplary. So, uh, we are very blessed in that respect, and the talent that we have at the teacher level and the talents at the student level really marries together very nicely. So, it's always exciting to be able to, um, uh, recognize our students and our staff in that way. Um, I wanted you to know that, um, now that we're going to begin this Growth Task Force, this is going to be, take some high priority, because we need to look at one of those long-term solutions for our high school, recognizing that, that, uh, we have worked through every short-term solution possible, I believe, um, and tried to make it work. Um, our high school staff and our leadership at the high school has been very, um, flexible in, in being willing to try different things and different strategies in order to meet the needs of our students on a day, day-to-end, day-out basis. But now we're at a point where we're gonna be looking very carefully at, what do we need to do as a district to make sure that we have the space needed for twenty-four-hundred students at our high school for many years to come? Not just next year, or not the year we, after that, but for the next five to ten years and, and in the future. It looks like that's our magic number. Excuse me. So, that will be a focus as we move into the winter. And then into the spring, we'll, we will be getting our, our immersion study. Uh, we will look for a, a timeline and a committee structure to come this spring, with beginning that early this summer. So, we will be, be getting that, uh, study as we move forward, after we complete many of, much of the work that is already on our plates at this time. So, we have good things going on throughout our district as we end, uh, two thousand and twelve, and we'll look forward to two thousand and thirteen, and, um, and the good things that are com, that are coming ahead of us. With the, um, with the construction that's going to be happening this summer, uh, we are eligible to ask the state for a, a variance on our calendar for two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Uh, that letter will be submitted tomorrow, most probably, and we should hear back quickly, but that would mean that our school would start for students on August twenty-sixth, the Monday before Labor Day, which, um, we cannot do by state statute unless- on August 26th, the Monday before Labor Day, which we cannot do by state statute unless we ask for that variance due to the construction and reconstruction at our middle schools, and possibly at our high school in the following year. We will need to have that variance in the coming year. So we are working with our teachers' union in our meeting confer process to reconfigure the calendar. We have a new draft of what it might look like. We'll work through that in December and January and bring back that to you as a board once we receive their okay from the state. Hopefully that will be in the mid-January time.
Are there any administrative reports? Julie, you don't want to...
Any board reports?
I did attend the Schools for Equity and Education General Meeting a week and a half or so ago. And I, just a couple highlights. Tom Melchercock, I think he's the Director of School Finance for State. And there's been a group meeting over the last year under the direction of the Commissioner about looking at how, you know, what are some different initiatives we can take with funding students, and basically looking at the funding. And so C has asked that, due to the fact that, you know, there's been a change in legislature, that this is a year where, you know, it's important that we get out in front of our legislators and talk and tell, I think, the public story or whatever. So I was just going to say that it would be good to have Brett Hattuck come and talk at a workshop and kind of explain some of our, because there's pretty, you know, drastic, not drastic, I shouldn't say that, a lot of different thought, not, not into this, and a lot of people study it for a long year, and there's some pretty interesting ideas in this, and it could change.
Seems to be something.
Right. And with us having the legislatures spread, we went having, in our area.
Any other reports?
We had a curriculum meeting earlier this evening, went over a few minor changes that they're going to be making at the middle school, sixth grade level, but at the ninth grade. After one year with the sixth-period day, they looked at everything and realized that it was very tough on, especially the sixth grade, as the every, every other day classes. So they were eliminating as many of those as they could. Went to, so now it's a half a year of FIAE, I believe, and then a half a year of social studies, instead of every other day. Figure that will help the, the sixth grade. And then at the eighth grade level, they're changing, right now we have a, we have a requirement that they have a health class. That's not a state requirement, that was just for our district. Because of a lot of the other requirements and students taking, wanting to take band, choir, and foreign language, having that requirement was very tough, because a lot of those students would have to do it during primetime. And then there, there's also some contractual issues that came up. So looking at eliminating that as a requirement, but then offering other classes, one of them is a, I don't know if you can, I can't remember the exact name of it. It's a fitness-type class, and another one is... But there's two other classes that will, that will help make up for that, that they can take if it fits in their schedule. They will still have to do the, the health at the high school level, and they're looking at the, the information that's, is being taught now at eighth grade level will be taught at the sixth and seventh grade level and the ninth grade level, so there won't be any gaps, or they won't be missing any of that information. They're going to rework their curriculum for that. And they also look at the different types of funding you have for interventions. There's three or four different programs, and they're looking at streamlining it and getting it all together, so all the students are getting the same information, getting the same comments from different teachers, instead of title pairs saying one thing and somebody else saying something else. Have it more cohesive, and then they said it would also not only help the student, because they're getting one, everybody's talking the same language, but it'll also be better use of the funds that we do get for that. That's going to be starting next year, I believe. This year? Okay, I'm sorry. This year, yeah. The only other thing is, the MIRSEC and Carver Scott co-ops, they're still on track to merge July 1st. Our current director has done a lot of work and kind of amazing things to get us out of the, when he took over, financially it was in a pretty tough shape, in a pretty tough shape. Now we're getting our heads above water, and he's combining and doing some very good things to get all that put together. By combining the two, it also makes a lot more financial sense and a lot more continuity between all the students that are going there. And that's all I have.
Any other reports? Is there anything else to add?
Short summary of our upcoming events. Just this past weekend, we finished our second dance of the year, and Activity Week. Right now, we are working on volunteer hours, as far as getting service hours in. We are currently, we're doing Bell Ringing for Salvation Army as far as service goes. We're also doing Feed My Starving Children, and we need to get about five hours of each person to meet a requirement, but we will always accept more. And the next big event for us would be Snowball and Snow Week, which is sometime in January, I want to say, or February. So looking forward to that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. Thank you.